Officially start and we're going to go to item number three.
If you don't, I know we talked, Antoinette, we talked about this before. If this is going to be an open or closed meeting. So I'm gathering that it's going to be an open or closed meeting. Okay, very good.
It was advertised.
Just, I know when we talked before, we weren't too sure, so.
Yeah, I think that was all taken care of.
Okay, perfect.
All right, so LFK, school renovation funding.
So yesterday, the budget committee met and then the board voted on a recommendation of the budget committee to go with LCW construction, which that gives a base bid of 12,000, or And they decided to go with all the add alternates, which takes that total down at the bottom at 13,5,600 dollars. So you can look through all of those add alternates there as far as what they were bid. So that's, that's this sheet right here. So if you're looking at that, so it's that middle column where it says LCW. So that's who was awarded the bid last night by the board based upon a recommendation from the facilities committee. The renovation sheet with that, it's got a yellow highlight on it, and I'm just recapping what they covered last night. You can see that identified funding there is 14,775,90. You also have what are also considered soft costs, but are costs that are associated, and that is the contingency fund for 5%. Cabling, we pulled that out of the bid because Tim likes to keep things uniform. You know, some people could put in Cat 5 when he wants Cat 6 or whatever, and so, so we're going to bid that out ourselves there, and that's an estimate. Tim feels pretty comfortable with that. Then, of course, you have the architect and engineering, you have the architect and engineering on Blue Ridge Tech, and then the cost for the third-party review. So you can see the total down there of 12,355,526. So when you look at that number and you compare that to the 13,5,600 that was approved last night, you can see that there's a difference of about 650,084 dollars for the full project. So what they discussed last night was value engineering, also using child nutrition funds to pay for cafeteria equipment such as walk-in freezers, any new equipment that can be put into the cafeteria that can legally be spent by food cafeteria funds. So their, the goal was to value engineer 650,000 dollars out of the entire project and then utilize cafeteria funds, which at the most, we're thinking maybe 150,000 that you can get out of cafeteria funds for, for equipment.
Because the bid for the kitchen upgrades and the walk-in freezers replacement is 258,800. So you can't use, you can't use the cafeteria funds for that whole amount?
Well, we have to see, because if that's flooring, if that, there's some things that we'd have to look at that maybe will not qualify. So when you use cafeteria funds, you also have to make sure that it's cleared through VDOE and make sure that those are, are good and solid that you can use it for. If we can get 258, we'll get 258 out of it, but we have to make sure that those, those costs are allowable to be used for child nutrition.
Because it might only cover like the freezer replacement, dishwasher, maybe the counter modifications. It might not be allowable for like the floor.
So, yeah, so we just have to see what we can get, and we're going to check on those. If we can get the 258, we'll get 258. Plus, we also have to balance, make sure there's, you know, yes, we do have a pretty good fund balance in our child nutrition right now, but we are, we are also at this point in time this year giving everybody free breakfast and lunch. So they did away with free breakfast and lunch at the federal level, and so we were going to have to go back to having some of our schools pay. So we're also modified our contract to where we will, if we have to utilize some of our cafeteria funds to balance out to make sure that our students are eating free breakfast and lunch this year, then we're going to reevaluate to see if we were able to make it or not. So we just have to make sure that those funds are, are there for that as well. But you're right, Ms.
So there's a half a million dollar delta. If we say 150,000 is likely utilized from, so there's still a half a million dollars to cover.
And they said, you know, obviously from the value engineering, they talked about too negotiating with contractors with costs for some of that, because that can still be completed. And then, you know, we talked about too last night that as we see if any, I mean, you'll explain it much better than me. We have, we see some funds that, you know, like a position didn't get filled or something, we could go ahead and that was the other thing.
Well, those are some of the things that we could do. So that was one thing that we talked about that, you know, if maybe, you know, do you, I think the question was last night, well, the question was last night as far as looking at waiting on carryover from a previous year and waiting on the audit. So I just said one of the things that you could do is request a transfer early in that year and say, we're going to put it towards facilities and then pay for those things out of that year. And then you're basically kind of doing the same thing as waiting on the audit at the end of the year to request the money later on, you're just doing it upfront.
So if it becomes-
Is that, Erin, is that legal?
Legal, probably, yes.
Okay.
The issue is that you're shaving yourselves short. We right now, each year, we get the audit in the spring. Example, we just got the audit four months ago, five months ago for '21. So that's the 1.6. And that 1.6, we talked about 600,000 goes to buses and 100,000, 1 million-
1 million goes to CIP.
Goes into this project up here.
Carryover.
And then when you go into the FY '23, this new, the budget you're in right now, that's the money you're bringing in to use.
Okay, so that's the 1.3 that we, that's an uncertain number.
No, 21, I'm talking about 21.
Okay, all right.
That's the 1.6.
Okay.
And we said 600, we have all said that 600,000-
Right, 600,000 will go to the bus fund, right?
And the remainder, and there's some change on that million, but approximately a million, goes into this project.
Okay.
Then that is the capital, bus money, et cetera, into '20, '22, '23, this year. If you take '22's money, which you will get next spring, next spring, we'd like to have it in January, if we have it in March, we'll be okay. Last year, we didn't get it till May, and we thought that was late, but we think we're going to beat that, and that's a good bit ahead on his schedule.
Okay.
But then that money is what you use for buses and capital in '23, '24.
So if we appropriate it or use it now, then we will have none for CIP and buses next year?
Then if somebody comes back and says, well, we need this, if we want to do E. Wilson, if we want to do anything with Blue Ridge after the engineer's done, there's no money.
Okay.
And next money's, next year is a reassessment year. It's going to be a tough year because right now, overall, the residential reassessments are up about 50%. So the normal, well, the normal rule is you then roll it back, so you would cut the rate in half. But the commercial side, the industrial side, is only up about 30%.
Okay.
So if you cut everything 50% to bring the residential down, then you're cutting this down to 15.
The industrial.
And that's going to shortchange you in terms of millions. So this is going to have to be, this is going to come down, but not the whole 50%, because it's got to level over here, so that your total picture.
Right.
And people are going to be unhappy when they come to talk to you about that, because they don't care what Toray pays, they care what they pay. And so we're telling all of our people that this is going to be a difficult year because of that, and you need to expect it with the budget next year. It's going to be very, very tight, little if anything in that. So I'd be concerned, I would rather come up with the money to fund this.
And worry about next year, next year.
With known funds.
Right.
Rather than going on the float, because we don't know what this number for 1.3 really is until the auditor signs it.
And I think from the discussion that I took away last night, they were very confident, the building committee, that they can, that they're going to get that 500,000 down between value engineering, negotiating with the contractors. I mean, I felt like they were like, that's-
And we also talked about the contingency if they don't, like if it turns out there is some of that money, or even the whole 500,000, then at that point, we can be looking at our operating funds and setting aside that money, like you said, for capital improvement.
And we, there's lots of places where we can find a little bit of money here and a little bit of money here to do it, but we've got to be able to see the picture and be able, when we get a final price, how we whittle this down a little bit, maybe you get 300,000 out of it. Just, oh, that's an arbitrary number, ma'am, but you get something like that, and we come up with 200,000 that we can put in it to make the five you're talking about. We just don't know exactly where it all is yet.
Well, and one thing that's not listed on here is that 600,000 that's still sitting out there in the CIP that-
Yes.
That's still sitting out there. So you have 600,000.
I think it's 630.
Yeah, it's six plus.
And that is the leftover, okay, help me, just so we know.
That's from Blue Ridge Tech.
Blue Ridge Tech roof.
So that was designated for Blue Ridge Tech roof and LFK roof. That was before we got all these CARES monies, because those roofs were going bad.
Right.
And that was FY '20 audit.
Okay.
So you did that in '21.
Right.
And '21 you do now.
So we do have the 600,000 leftover that we could use for this if we need to.
If you want to put there.
But that, but that means we deplete.
And that means, that means you push E. Wilson someplace else.
Right.
Well, here's, you know, you look at what the, what you needed, what I'm going to recommend to the board for is to look at, go ahead with the A&E at E. Wilson Morrison, which will probably run somewhere, you know, when I share, but we said 300,000, I think, is what our figure was.
That's the number we heard.
And it'll probably be less than that, because if you're just going to redo that, that auditorium, you're not building a whole new building at this point in time. So it should not be 300,000. When you look at the A&E for the Blue Ridge, for the Blue Ridge Tech HVAC, that was 61,000, and that was projected to be a million dollars to do the, to do an HVAC at Blue Ridge Tech.
Now, is the study at A, does the A&E at Wilson, does that cover the whole building to study it for the A&E?
As far as for, that's just, that would just be looking at doing that cafeteria-
On the add, just the add-on?
Just the cafeteria. That'd be filling in that auditorium.
Okay.
That's not looking at doing anything, right now, the short term is to get them a larger place to have indoor physical education.
So the rest of the building itself, except for those outside classrooms?
Right.
Is okay?
Yeah, every, I mean, I mean, we need to look at those in the near future, but, you know, right now, the goal is, and that was the push, is to get them an indoor place for physical education. That's bigger than just two classrooms put together.
And old schools are a never-ending replacement process.
Yeah, yes.
They really are.
We do need to replace those old outbuildings at some point down the road. But when you look at that, if you take, take the 300,000 or designate 300,000 out of that 6 or 630, which leaves you 330, plus you have, if you go on the low side of 150, so you're, you're sitting there at 480 out of the cafeteria, the 150 out of cafeteria, you're sitting there at 480 out of that 650, which means they don't have to value engineer much more out of. Thinking about value engineer the full 650, you're still in the positive, and you still have more money going towards E. Wilson Morrison to complete that, to start the project. The A&E on E. Wilson Morrison's going to take, you know, some time to do. You're not looking at construction on that for probably, I would say, what, eight to 12 months probably anyway, depending upon how-
12 months, you need to know what you're going to do.
Right, 12 months, we're going to know where the money, we're going to need to know where the money is coming from. Yeah.
And so, looking at that, it's, you know, with our figures where we're at with LFK, there's, there's a lot of avenues to get to where we need to be. So it's, it's definitely there. When you look at the value engineering, you can get there pretty easily.
And I think some numbers in there, they can, they can-
And they felt very comfortable.
They can get out on someplace. I just, the only thing that concerns me is the FY '22, until we have a signed audit, that's all.
Right.
Right, because that's just an estimate number.
So I, I know I asked this question before, and I just want to make sure I understand. So this is going, the type of contract we're going to be, the school is going to reward, award, is a firm fixed-price contract?
That is my understanding, yes.
Does the fixed prices for, like you-
Firm fixed-price contract.
That's what they were saying. Now, if you have your contingency, is if you run into some type of-
I understand.
-unforcing issues.
So you, you have a firm fixed-price contract with this contractor for 14,770,000.
Well, for the 13, 13 million odd thousand.
The 13?
The 13, that's what it is.
It's 13.
It's this middle number there.
So, understanding, there's some risks involved, but with a firm fixed-price contract, a lot of times contractors risk mitigate those type of things, and they're rolled into their costs. So another thing I wanted to ask is, when we start talking about estimates, I just want to throw this, a concern on my, on my part. When we talk, when we forecast, we're not, I, I don't know if we're looking at thin year money. So when we go here with this estimate of the, you know, the 1.3 million that we all kind of agreed that we can't, and, and when I hear, oh, they feel good, and this, that, and the other thing, you know, but the way our economy is going with inflation, you know, I'm hoping that these, this estimate is considering the thin year money next year's night.
So the 15, 420 is the total of the total cost with this and the contract?
So the 12, 355 would be what you have, the 14, 770 is the revenue that you have.
You know, the 15-
What are you saying, when you say-
Yeah, oh, yeah, well, if you're adding, adding those, so you take the 14, subtract the two to get the 12.
Well, how about if I just take the 13?
Yeah.
And I add 24, 2,415,000, this number right there, and that puts me at 15, 420. And then that's, that's kind of like the outside, that's the maximum we believe this could cost if we didn't do any value, value engineering, if we didn't get anything here or anything there. This is the maximum it would cost. And then the 14, 7, and I exclude the 1.3, is what we have available right now, and we're trying to get, that's the 700, approximate 700,000 variable.
Yeah, the 6, the 650.
650, 700. And so we get the 650, what we talked about, plus take this 1, 3 out of there, the figure, see how much of it we can squeeze a little bit from the cafeteria fund, a little bit from value engineering, et cetera, see, look at that 670 we've got over there, and then see what else the board may need to put into this to finish it. Yeah, that's all doable.
Yeah.
To come up with a number. And the final, final cost, is this about 18-month project?
Uh, yeah, it'll be, it has to be completed August of '24.
'24, okay, so.
So we have another year.
That we'll be working on it, yes.
So, so explain to me the funding mechanism. So we don't have this 1.3 to debt.
Correct.
So does, do we have to have all the money in an account dedicated to this before we can execute?
Not if you know where you can get it.
Okay. Well, we don't know where we can get it for sure.
Well, we have to go to the Bank of Dolores.
Oh, yeah, well, we're going to be, we're going to be sadly, yeah.
That's where we're going. We gotta, we, we have to know that we have the funds to pay the contractor.
Right.
But we have enough options.
That we feel confident we can do that.
That if we keep our options.
Right.
We don't want to go back before, I don't like to shave ourselves too tight.
Too thin.
Trying to keep it loose.
Absolutely.
But as long as we do that, we're in good shape with this. We can do this and still be looking at getting, moving E. Wilson forward and working on Blue Ridge. And these, as I said, these old schools, they all cost money. And that's just the way they are.
And there'll be another whack, whack after this one.
And we can go over to the courthouse.
Yeah.
We can work there too.
Yeah.
So before a school board can enter into a legal contract with a contractor to do this job for the 13,5,600, doesn't the school board need to have that money appropriated to them before they can legally enter into a, a contract?
We can't appropriate next year's funds.
Well, that, you wouldn't, to do this.
Yeah.
Take, set this over here aside.
Okay.
These other things we need to do. You can do this with the money that's there. I mean, you can come real close on this contract, Rob. And I haven't done the last $10, but you can come real close to being able to take this for, this would be 13, 470, and this is 13, 005.
Okay.
So the money for the contract is there.
The contingency may not be.
It's the contingency, and the, you got to have the cabling, and you got to have A&E for LFK, et cetera. You've got to have these, but they're not part of this contract.
Okay.
So I think you're good.
So we would be covered.
You're covered there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Buck and I talked about that yesterday with where we're at, with the appropriations that we're, that we're fine with where we're at.
But we still have to plan for 2.415.
That's right.
Okay.
That part, but I think we can, the board, the school board can go ahead and do this part.
So you want to repeat what you planned for?
The 2415074, so we can enter into a contract for the 13 million. What, so what I'm trying to figure out is, is how do you appropriate next year's surplus if you don't have it yet? You can't appropriate it now.
No, no.
So how do we enter into this contract for 13 million and still plan for the 2.415 that it may take to finish the project?
So the contract is 13, 005.
Right.
And we take the 1.3 out of here, and this is 13, 470.
So you still-
So we have more money than we need for the contract.
Right.
And as the project total progresses, we all need to keep in mind this 2.4.
Right.
Which will need to be in there at, in the future.
Right.
And when they come and they find something that they need that's $20,000, well, that'll be the first part of the contingency, which, which you would still have. But after, after a while there, we would start adding more money to.
When the audit is done, if it's done in January, February, or March, or whenever it's done.
Someplace there.
Then when you have that figure, then there's your, you know, that other dollar amount, that 1.3 that's sitting there. And just always keep in mind, because we're not putting the, that, you know, we're not putting that 600 and 6, that 600-plus on here, because we're wanting to kind of keep that to the side to really start to do some things with E. Wilson Morrison. But you do have that right now also, if you had to, if you had to dip into that.
We have, we have 600, I think it's 630,000. Well, I think it is, is that right?
I thought it was 670, because wasn't it, no, what was the Blue Ridge Tech worth?
It was 370.
370, so it'll be 630.
So we have 630 that is there, and that we have reserved for schools' capital, and that-
Right.
Can go in here, it can go into, it can go into-
E. Wilson.
It can go into Blue Ridge, you can, and the board can decide wherever they want it. That's for your next project. If you remember, there's about 12.2 total on the five-year plan that's for schools' capital that's in your budget, adopted budget there for the five-year CIP.
Okay.
And we had LFK, and then after that, there were about, about 12.2, but it said those numbers are going to be flexible a little bit, and then they come back.
Yeah, and projects are going to be whenever.
Different. But something in that range.
To plan for.
That you need to be thinking about over five years.
Right. Okay.
So I think we can, we can proceed with this of the base contract.
In the base.
And keep this number in mind, and this will be a changing number month from now. It may come back, it may be 2.1 instead of 2.4.
Okay.
The delta will-
Will shrink.
Will move.
It's going to trash.
We're going to trash.
We're hoping.
That's a trend.
I will tell you though, I have, I get nervous when we say that we may be able to value engineer without opening it up and finding mold or something somewhere, because that is just, it's an old building.
Yeah, that's what we found in the courthouse.
And it's a moist building.
Well, in that, in that 800,000, I think they shot really on the high side with that.
Okay.
So, you know, we're, we're hoping to get that under, under that figure there. So, you know, you could be looking at 150 to 200,000 dollars, possibly less, because I just think we went on the high side.
On the cabling?
Yes.
Okay.
A year, you may be talking, if this number's down 500,000, it may be down a million.
Because of economic conditions?
Things have shrunk in here.
Right, okay.
And you'll have a, when you're halfway through the project, you're going to have a better picture.
Yep. But we have to plan for the worst and hope for the best.
You have to assume that you're going to need this 2.4.
Right.
Absolutely, that's what we have to plan for next year.
And then what's left is gravy. That you, that you've got, you've put in that capital fund, and you can use it for the future.
Okay. All right. And that's just hoping that prices don't go up.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you've got the supply chain issues going on right now, you know, so when I see cabling and technology, I'm like, okay, what's it going to be like next year?
And a lot of that's in-house, Tim.
Well, they were, yeah, I think some of them-
Well, buying the materials is what I'm referring to, not the lighter. So, but no, but that's, this is good. Something for us to plan on our next budget cycle, to make sure that we have that put aside.
Keep, keep that in your picture. And as it shrinks, you just change it.
And it's a fixed, firm fixed-price contract.
Okay. All right. Very good with that one?
Yeah.
I think we have a good picture of where we're going.
I guess, I'll pass to number two?
Yep.
I guess, okay, discussion regarding the appropriation of the remaining 1.2 million for fiscal year '23, which we've kind of put off to the side.
Well, that's my substitute in here.
That's right, for the-
Is what it is.
For the capital improvement, that's right.
So you see what this whole picture looks like?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I wouldn't spend it.
No.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't spend it at all, I'd keep it right in that.
See, that's, that's where this is coming, the 1.3 here.
No, that's, that will, that will-
That's part of the 2.4.
That's part of the 2.4, the 1.3, okay.
If I take the 1.3 off.
Which is the audit, which when we get the audit. And Rob, what was, what are you looking at right now with your rough numbers from the end of last year?
That's your 3 million, okay.
Well, it's real rough at this point, the 1.3 is what we're- Well, it's real rough at this point, the, the one point three is what we're.
Hoping for.
Hoping for, yes. I mean, I, I hope it's better, I hope it's better, but.
It's a guess, until, until Michael says this is the number, I don't know. Because he, whatever number he comes up with is one we live with.
My, my number doesn't matter.
That's right.
It's his number.
Matt's number doesn't matter, Michael's does.
Yeah.
So when he gives us that number, then you have that jointly to address how you're gonna use a year from now. For this one, we have one three two seven oh, which is more than the base contract of one three zero zero five.
Right.
And then that, anything in addition goes towards this two point four.
Right. So whatever we have left over.
Right.
So I think, you know, I mean, there's still a lot, if you look at our operating budget, that we would like to work on this year for that one point two, so that's, you know, there's still a lot out there to, to get that, to support our kids. I feel like what I just heard though was you guys are not gonna look at appropriating that this year?
We would, we would prefer, if, if it's possible, to just hold on until you absolutely say we need it.
Well, I mean, we have, we have, we do need it, we need positions here to support our students.
So you have, how many SOQ positions are here? One, I think, so an English language teacher is an SOQ. Are teachers, I don't know, are they SOQ or no? I don't think so. So here's, here's something else that we'd like you to consider, is that these, all of this money is not going to be funded again next year. So, that means we have to plan to be able to sustain the operating budget next year for what it is this year, and that is an increase in taxes. That's going, if we include these, that's gonna be an inevitability. So that, and then, yeah, so that's why we're trying to figure this out. And then, the SOQ positions are funded, I know some by the state, and then I believe that, um, a request was made to, to ask for how many funded, like, we have so many funded positions per number of students, and then how many of those positions per our number of students that have been given to us by the state have been funded? Do we have that information? Like the twelve and a half third grade teachers, you can't hire a twelve and a half, you can only hire thirteen. So how many have, do we have per what the state recommends based on the number of students we have?
I don't know the answer to that, um, HR would probably be in a better position as far as the allocation of those resources.
Okay.
Now, as far as our SOQ positions, we're gonna have the SOQ positions plus, because you have some that require additional students, and you have some schools, because of class size reduction, that you have, uh, so for instance, like E. Wilson Morrison, some of our elementary schools, you can have twenty-one to twenty-two in their class size. But E. Wilson Morrison, because of, uh, being a high-risk school and because of accreditation, they can, they can only have, um, I think it's around eighteen to nineteen per teacher. So those reductions, so you may have an extra teacher in some of those areas versus some of the other schools that can have a higher class size. You know, when you, when you look at, at positions, one, the, you know, you're, you're trying to do what is best for, for students. And so when you think about these, these two, and you mentioned the art teachers.
Right.
So right now, our art teachers are splitting between schools. So they get half of one, they're half a year at one school or half a year at another school. The goal with the art teachers is to make sure that those students get art all year long at that school. When you look at the ELL teachers, so right now, what we're doing is we're moving a math teacher that we may not be able to fill, so we're actually gonna take it away from a high school, and we're gonna put it in the ELL. So that's why ELL is not on here, because it was on a previous list, because right now, we are not meeting the minutes.
What is ELL?
English Language Learner.
Okay.
And so, we are not meeting the minutes that's required, and that's why it was put on that list. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna reshuffle, which will go to the board, to take that from, from one school, to make that.
So you would take a math teacher to go to ELL?
No, we're taking the position, so we're gonna remove that math position, and we have to plug it in for an ELL.
I, I understand.
Uh, so that means that, that school will not be able to recruit a math teacher.
Okay.
Because we have to meet those minutes that are required by federal law that, with, with our, our English Language Learners.
So, so Dr. Ballinger, I, you know I'm always straightforward with you, and I'm gonna be here. So if you take these two elementary art teachers, and do you believe that you will hire those from outside? Or if somebody internally who's currently teaching English at elementary school, then you're gonna create another hole?
Right, no.
And, and that's gonna be a core subject, and that was something that was raised as a concern to me by another, by some teachers.
Right.
They were concerned that they were gonna be shorted if they got, if we had art teachers that were previously English or science moved into art.
Yeah, no, and that's not gonna be the case. So we, we have looked, and we know that, uh, one, the method is that we're not, we're not going to hire one of the vacant positions with somebody that's already in a position. So, that, that is not going to happen, uh, because we don't wanna shortchange any of our schools right now. So what we would look at are outside, outside people coming in. We have somebody that has been calling us on a regular basis that is ready for an art teacher's job, um, and that is certified. And I know in cabinet, we went through just the other day, um, and, and talking to HR to say, you know, what's your confidence level in filling these positions from outside people? Not in-house, but outside.
Right.
And, and I know there, there's that list of, yes, the, the art teachers, we feel that we could get those from, from outside, um, with a high confidence. The school counselors, they know that they could probably get those from outside. The library assistants, usually your assistants, your instructional assistants, those they can get from outside. And Rob, you have that, kinda with that high confidence as far as that list that you were.
I don't have that a lot either.
No, you can go ahead and read through it, I mean, as far as.
Here, here are the ones that, based on input from HR and all, that we felt with high confidence we could. Were the two elementary art, um, an elementary school counselor, the director of communications, a board-certified behavior analysis analyst, and, uh, library assistants at the high schools, instructional assistant at Blue Ridge Tech Center, a pathways and connections instructional assistant at Warren County High School. And then, we had talked about increasing the, um, Blue Ridge Tech career coach to full-time. There's a person in there part-time now. Those are the ones we felt we could externally fill with a relatively high confidence. The ones that we didn't, um, were, was the one technology integration coach. Um, I think they felt that probably it would be best someone internal, and, and that would create another problem.
Another hole, right.
And then our two math coaches, which I think we desperately need, but feel there's not a likelihood of getting someone from the outside, that it would be someone internal, and then that creates two more math vacancies that we can't fill the existing ones.
So how many vacancies do we have now?
Um, I know Mr. Goodwin just gave a report at the last board meeting.
Nineteen.
No, that's not including this list.
But that doesn't include this list, 'cause these haven't been with their tasks.
Yeah, so it's nineteen existing positions that we need to fill.
But that was like, at our last meeting, so that was like.
Right.
Two weeks ago.
It's gonna change.
Yeah, and I think of the nineteen, it was six teachers?
He had several that were identified already for those nineteen.
It was a mixture of teachers, teaching assistants, and some, uh, maintenance, I think, was in there. So it's not like nineteen teaching positions.
So does, does that let you start to project what your expenditures are gonna be?
Would be, it, it, we're at a point now where once we've got, you know, sort of the workforce stabilized, that yes, we can start looking at, we budgeted for this position this amount, the person we budgeted for is not here for whatever reason, their replacement.
Or they were hired at this amount.
At this, yeah, or they, whatever, yeah.
We could start to see what the delta is there.
Yeah. Gotta look at other things too, though.
That's right.
Cause, um, one of the things is for these positions we've not been able to hire, we're putting long-term subs in, so that's coming out of contracted services, so that has the potential to, to overrun, yeah.
Right, you're shifting, so you have to, you have to take.
Have to balance one against, yeah, net it out and see where.
Count the contract, yes.
See where.
But it does make a difference. So we look to wait and see where we go here, and see what happens, where this project ends up.
So what would be a good point in the year to reevaluate this? Three months, six months?
Probably three.
Three months?
Three months should be, that should, this, this will be under contract.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll know how that goes. We will have the, uh, be able to do the, uh, get the cost for the architect and engineering for L F K and for Blue Ridge, I assume both of them. Looking on here for Blue Ridge and for E W, rather. And we'll.
Then we can read.
Then we can read.
Look at performance and see where we're going.
See where we are, because, remember, we've got this five percent, we've gotta look for for next year.
I know, I know, there's a lot coming.
And, uh.
And the five percent is the increases for next year that, that.
For a year from now, that's right.
Will not be funded by the state.
That's correct.
Well, the stuff, the state very thoughtfully funds, announces that they have funded, and they provide about forty percent.
So we'll have to look at sixty.
With the salaries for next year? So Rob ran figures on that to look at where we were at for next year, uh, with the five percent. If we do what we did this year, which is the five percent inclusive of the step. And with what we were getting, what we would get from the state, we would be, it was around four hundred thousand, I believe, what you projected.
Come up short.
But we felt we would carry that with.
Using all additional state revenue that they've done in next, in the fi, in next year's budget. Now, that will change come January, when the general assembly, they'll adjust it. Hopefully, the economy continues rolling like it is, and they'll adjust it upward, but.
So that's, is that a change from the, the last number we were looking at? That they had, it was nine hundred thousand roughly with state money, I think, and then one point two that the county would add to it, is that different?
That's what we have at our projection.
That was the one for this year, that was the, for this year.
Yeah, well, wouldn't next year.
They're bumping it, for whatever reason, they bumped it up considerably what they were gonna.
Put more money into, are?
They are.
That's even, that's better.
Yeah.
And how much is that for next year, Rob?
Uh, that they're gonna fund the state, I believe it's a little, one point two million.
So we would have that, so they flipped then, it was, okay, so we eight hundred thousand for us.
So ours was gonna be less than the one point two.
One point two, okay.
But then they, they have some other areas where they're giving us additional money. Um, so it, it really brought it down to about four hundred thousand, and, uh.
The governor announced he has all this money down there, he wants to have.
Give it back to us.
Send it to Warren County School. And you can do something with personal property tax.
And, and with teacher turnover from one year to the next, we felt with the high confidence that that, we meant, we would definitely meet that to be able to fund that five percent inclusive of the step.
Okay.
Fully next year.
Next year, okay, all right.
So, so that's, that's one thing that we, we looked at. And actually, I'll be honest with you, when we ran the numbers for next year, which is inclusive of the step, we included these positions that were not.
Right.
That we do not have yet.
Yeah.
So we actually included the extra thirteen, thirteen and a half. Uh, positions, that, that number. I had them put them in at a ten-year, was it ten-year or fifteen? I can't remember what, what I had them put it in at, but they, they actually ran numbers with these positions in there to, and then we're looking at it with a five percent inclusive of.
I think they did a fifteen-year experience, which, yeah, if you hire less than that, then we're.
If you hire less than that, it's a.
Some costs is less.
But if we're able to, we're able to do that.
Right.
Then you can't put that money in any, any project like this. So if, if the, normally the surplus goes into the capital.
Right.
And we reserve surplus to pay this, the county share of these raises.
Right.
Then we can't put it here, 'cause it's gone.
Right.
You only get to spend your money once.
Yeah, unfortunately, wish I could, yeah, so we could replicate it.
So you just, uh, define for me, when I hear it's included, you know, this, um, the, the locality, locality shares included in the next year's budget, are you saying it's going to be absorbed with the budget we gave, that we have for this year? Or you're gonna come back and increase the budget to include the local share? I just, I need to understand the terminology, that's all.
So I think is what we figured on, just looking at, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, you know, looking at what the county initially was going to, to do, was the twenty-seven, seven, twenty.
Correct.
And I don't know if that's what, you figured that in on with the, with the budget for, or in that, in those projections? Or did you just look at what the salaries were, plus what the states, what the state was gonna have?
Right, that's right, I looked at what the additional five percent would cost for the existing positions and the vacant positions, plus these additional positions that are sort of on hold at this point for a worst-case scenario, and that came up to a number. When I looked at what the state was gonna increase their funding next year, we were about four hundred thousand to five hundred thousand short of being able to do that. Now, one way of doing it would be to ask the county for the extra money. The other way we feel we have a high confidence in is that with the turnover that we experience, um, we'll have savings between what we've budgeted for positions and what they've actually cost us. That savings rolls forward to the next year then, too.
But what we were saying is that savings typically goes back into CIP, and that we would have to do a special designation for it to come to you guys in terms of operating.
Well, you can do that easily, now, 'cause you, you, the supervisors make an allocation of the surplus each year, and you designate where it goes.
Designate where it goes, okay.
You can certainly designate it to that.
And this wouldn't be really designating this year's surplus the next year. This year's surplus would still, um, be available, and, and when the audit's done, you would have whatever that is. It's just that when we start to build our next year's budget, we'll have that savings, um, in our cost to, to be able to use if you level fund us.
If, okay, okay, all right, that makes sense.
Yeah.
All right, now I got you.
And then, that year, if we have turnover and savings, that'll generate another surplus that, you know, you continue the process. So we're not, we're not taking an advance or, or robbing Peter to pay Paul, so to speak.
We're hoping not to have so much turnover, but, yeah.
Well, yes, we, we very much hope that, but.
Yeah. All right, what's next?
Yes, number four, the discussion. So, so I just, I understand, so we're just gonna regroup, reevaluate this in three months?
Okay.
Okay.
See where we are.
See where we are in three months?
Let's see what the, everything looks like.
Okay.
So, um, no interest in revenue sharing?
Well, it's gonna be a little bit of conversation in just that one board meeting. So, uh, when looking at some numbers, I, I did some comparisons, and looking at on average over the last, um, ten years or so, and throwing some numbers in, the, the average was around, doing it on a previous year or two, on a two-year cycle, so looking at two years, the audit two years ago, 'cause that's what.
Okay, okay.
That, that, that number was actually pushing around forty, I think it's almost forty-five, forty-six percent on the, on that percentage. So the forty, the forty-two, uh, percent was a little bit lower than what we looked at comparing the.
Average.
Average over.
Comparing the prior, because the forty-two, I think, was comparing all in the same year.
Yes, it was using last year's.
So we didn't look at the idea of taking last year's audit number compared to this year's budget? So we didn't look at the idea of taking last year's audit number compared to this year's budget? Which, that makes sense. I see that.
Yeah, because you were looking at the 20, so right now, the only audit we had to go off of would have been.
The 21.
The 21 audit. So if, and your figure was based off the 21 audit, which gave a 42.47%, I believe was the number, which was the 27720. And so by using that same formula of looking back at a two-year, because we're in budget year 23. So this is FY '23. So going back and looking at those previous years, that that percentage on average was, was higher than the 42.47%.
Okay, so I could go back to 20 and look at the 22.
Right.
Yeah.
Because I think that's the way we'll have to do it. Because in January of next year, we'll be looking at the fiscal '24 budget and we'll just be getting the fiscal '22 audit then in January of '23. So it's sort of like a two-year jump. Because you're in one year, you're using the prior year to project the next year's.
And then in the spring, we would be able to shorten that, you know, when, when the new audit comes in, like the audit right now, if we were doing this today, we would use 21.
Right.
But come next spring, we could change the number to 22.
But we'll be doing '24's budget then.
That, that's right, which is, so it's still.
Two years behind.
Yeah, it's still a two-year.
Two-year cycles, yeah.
If you're going to use an audit number to.
That makes sense. Um, we can use the latest audit in the spring.
And I can go pull something, and I use some, and, and I want to make sure, well, this one just had, no, this one doesn't have Matt's numbers where he sent me his numbers. This was just where I projected some numbers, so I wanted to, I need to find, I can go click the one off that.
I don't have the one he gave us, I don't think.
Yeah, where Matt actually gave us his numbers for those years for the pilot and.
The pilot.
And the food tax or.
Lodging.
Lodging. Yeah, it'll be in that. Yeah, it'll be in. Go back one more. Yeah, so kind of just, where it's grayed, I estimated because Matt gave me these hard figures. So I put his hard figures in here, but this gray area is not. Those were just estimates. What I did is I used the higher of the year just to make sure it's, it's up. But when you, when you look at going from using this number to get us to where we're at, that's where you got the 42.47, so you're looking at the 21 audit. If you look at this number to get here, it would have actually been that. But so, so this is where you get down here. You're looking at the two-year averages to find out what we were, actually the percentage was on a two-year average. So you go back two years and that's the actual percent. So I averaged them, it's about 45.9% on, on average, looking at, using that, that cycle of.
Yeah.
Of the previous two-year audit.
That, that makes sense. We could go back and, let's see if we can have a copy of the page and we can go back and look at it. But that makes sense.
Yeah, and Matt could probably fill in those gray areas up there.
Yep.
With true numbers to give an, an even truer picture. Again, I just, I looked at those previous, and, and you can see all of those years before, basically I used. And so you can see that's a comparison of what, what I did, what I have on that sheet is actually a comparison for what the, the actual taxes were that year versus what was actually appropriated and what is that percentage. Then I have a comparison to what would have been appropriated using a 42%.
Using the prior year.
Versus what was actually appropriated. And so we, we, we did a comparison in that, in that model. And you can see that, just some differences there. So, you know, and my board felt that they wanted to have, you know, that, that this is more of a, a longer conversation than just.
Okay.
Now, you know.
Could you guys send that to us? I would like to see the comparison. It's in a PowerPoint, so yeah.
This is in our board docs. It was in our board docs.
Okay.
I can email it to you.
I don't even know if I can get into your board doc.
It's cut off on email. Because I stuck it, I'll just email.
Thanks.
I'll just email the, the worksheet, so.
Yeah. But I think that number, the 45 or 42, whatever the number comes out to, we don't need Michael. So the number is whatever it is. And if it's 45, I hadn't thought about the fact of going to the prior year. That's a good point. Because the money's coming from the prior year.
To go to the next year.
Yeah. That's right.
So we need to play with that, that algorithm a little bit to make sure that we're not underfunding and we're not, yeah, and we're not committing more than we can.
And it will mean that the board, the county carries the differential there. When, when personal property rates values are up, there's more money that shows up here. And at the same time, this value may now be more leveled or even down, but this number is still where it is because it's based on here.
Okay.
And if, if the state decides next year they're taking the meals tax off groceries and they don't replace it, that's about a million two is what we thought.
And that goes to schools, right?
No, and that's not the million that goes to, schools has their own allocation and state formula.
Okay.
There's another allocation that goes to localities.
Okay.
And of our money that comes to us, there's about 1.2 that comes from food. And if they take that off, which they've talked about, the legislature might do it, they might not. But if they do, then they would do that maybe next year. And we would be basing our formula here.
There'd be a two-year lag.
So there's two years that the schools, we would continue to fund and we would be carrying that differential that would be a drop for us. That's the downside of it is that we would catch ourselves, we'd catch ourselves in.
So, so it wouldn't fluctuate at all then? So you're saying the MOU, whatever percentage we agree to is always going to be that?
That would be the percentage that we would use for the future.
For the prior two years, right. But if, but if our revenue goes down.
Then theirs does too in two years.
In two years.
Conversely, if your revenue goes up, your tax base expands.
Then yours goes up in two years.
Right.
That's right.
Right.
And I haven't found an easier way to do it than to use the audit. If we use the budget number, we're all, we're all guessing.
Your estimate.
That's not Michael's number.
So it's not Michael's number, so it's not the real number.
That's something to think about.
Something to think about.
Well, I can, I'll, I'll share that with you. You know, the board's not, the board's not closed to the idea, but they all felt that it's, you know, more discussion.
Something to think about.
I don't think any of them are going to say yes or no.
And, and I think it does need more evaluation. To be honest, I did, I want to see the, the potential forecast of what that would do. And we're hoping that it would benefit you and that it would end all of this sort of thing.
It would simplify that.
It would make things so simple that you knew where you stood every year and it would make life easier for all of us. And I think it would be good for the community.
And that's the intent, is to be able to predict.
Right.
When you could plan, get a plan.
And the, so the county carries the two-year delay, plus or minus.
Right.
But schools would know two years in advance where we're going.
Right, yeah.
So that they would be able to say, well, we're going to have 27.6 instead of 27.7, or we're going to have 28.1. And they would, they would know that and time to be able to put it in the picture.
Yeah. I think it's a great idea. We've looked at other localities that have tried it. I did.
Yeah. A lot of them make it more complicated than necessary.
Prince William did it, Arlington doesn't.
We're talking about the number of kids this day and what happens on September 30th and et cetera, et cetera. And I, I just did this the simple as I could, you know, simple minds up here.
The key to, the key to, to this is, you know, like this year, when the audit came in in May, and if we're waiting till May to get that final number to try to do a budget.
It's too hard.
It's, that would be too, too, too late. So, you know, the key would be that those audits are done as early as possible in the budget year to know to, to plan for that.
Right.
And we believe that's, that's been addressed. Matt's about four months ahead of where we were last year.
Which is great to know. It is, that's good.
And that's six months ahead of where we were, two years ago.
Yeah. We're good.
Well, then we had when the EDA, they couldn't do their audit. It held out, I mean, it just.
It's a domino effect, it is. It's a domino effect.
You'll figure out the EDA audit. Let me.
So for number four, how many students are enrolled in Warren County Schools this year?
We just, sorry, I just set that out. And right now, you're, we're just, we're only, I believe it was seven or eight short of what we budgeted for this year right now. And that's the starter school. Now, that doesn't include pre-K either, which you have 173 pre-Ks. So we're right at 49.
72 on the eighth day. 49, 72 on the eighth day.
That was on the eighth day.
And that's still likely to go up, you said, right?
Yes.
After Labor Day.
Yeah, you still have some families.
Usually after Labor Day and you get.
You've got kids still on vacation.
It cracks me up that there are just people who are just.
So for number four, do you think if, we'll get this document shared with you all so he can, he can take a look at those numbers and then come back at the next time?
Yeah.
And then talk more. We'll go back and look at this.
Maybe kind of, I'm not sure what else to discuss right now with it. Let's.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Does that sound like a plan?
Yeah. I think it is.
But I think once we get, we get to, to that point, then we can talk about the language too. But I think that's kind of the starting point. So let's share that, those documents and.
I agree, that is the starting point. So we need to evaluate the algorithm and how.
45.
Yeah, and, and, and plan for the unexpected consequences. Because there are always unintended consequences in these, in these agreements.
And people get in the Beltway down there in Richmond, they kind of lose their sense of normalcy.
Excuse me.
They have to be careful of that way.
Excuse me, yeah, I was going to say.
We're going to have to keep bringing it back out.
I think he's throwing shade, y'all, I don't know.
Bringing it back into reality.
I have to get elected.
All right, so number five.
Yes.
That'd be Rob.
Yeah.
Number five, okay. Well, you know, we got the additional appropriation of the $5,714,541. It was put in instruction to begin with. I've gone back and allocated it across all the budget and come up with a line item budget that adds up to the total appropriated amount that, that we've been given, including the bulleted items that, you know, we were asked to, to restore to the budget. And each of them has been restored to the budget. And what I'll do is on September 7th, I'll present it to the school board so they can approve the final budget. And at that point, I'll, I'll share with you the breakout category before then. And then I suspect it'll be the same after the 7th, but not going to predict that.
Because some of that has to be put in different categories.
I was going to say, we need to transfer money to categories.
It's in every category.
We just put it there.
Yeah, because the staffing aren't all there.
Place over.
And so that will be, that will be done at the September meeting and then come to, to you.
The second.
Monday, the 7th?
No, Monday is.
Should be a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
The 7th, that'll come to.
Because our meeting, Ed, is on the 6th. So we will not be able to act, to take action on this until September.
Either the 13th or the 20th.
Right.
Yeah, because ours is on the 7th.
Right. So we'll have to take action the 13th or the 20th on that.
We can do that.
Yeah, yeah.
We just didn't know where to put it.
Yeah, right, right. We didn't do it really at that point, though we, though we put it.
Right.
So do you think it'd be a good idea that we meet before we present all of this to our boards? Just to have a time to look at the appropriations? Or does everyone feel good, whatever is presented to the board is, is good?
I've got the information now as we're going to present it to our board. So I can share that out.
No worries, just wanted to put it out on the table.
Yep, appreciate it.
All right, so number six.
All right, so this one, and as Dr. Riley mentioned earlier, you know, we've been throwing out the 1.6 and $600,000 for buses and $1 million for, for capital improvement. But there was, when my first year here, we had a meeting and, and Dr. W., you may remember this, that we were in here and we were talking about with the raises that year. And, and it was brought up that, you know, the board of supervisors funded $247,000.
267, 200.
Yeah, to help, to help with other category, or, or other employees get a raise. That was the year also, starting with the pandemic, that.
Summer 19?
They were 20. That they were, that they, that they told us that we needed to hold back a certain percentage. And so at that time, teachers got the raise, everybody else was hit off.
Instructional assistants did not, I remember.
Nurses and I think some other positions did not.
Yep.
And so then we did the bonus for everybody in that year.
267, 200.
I want to say it was, when we, when did we do that bonus?
We did it in March of '21. Right about the time of spring, right of spring, right.
Right, so during a meeting at that time, you know, we said that because we didn't fund those raises at that time, when the audit came out, we would return the 267 whatever. So that is how that is written.
Oh, okay.
Do you remember that conversation?
I remember what you're talking about, yes, sir.
So, so, you know, staying true to my word is what I said I would do. You know, so I did, you know, I wanted to explain that, that, you know, that, that conversation again was over two years ago.
It was, but yeah, I remember what you're talking about now.
Yeah, and so that is how it's written up, that we would request the million for CIP, the 400 and.
409, 913 to the transportation fund. And then 267, 200 to be retained by the county as we had previously agreed. And that should add up to the million 677, 113 that the FY '21 surplus was, is.
See, now that goes back to the county. And you can leave that here, remember.
600,000 becomes 300.
When you're looking at this project and you're trying to find this 2.4, that's 267, which you may want to keep in mind that's in there to put towards it.
Right, so we can actually allocate that to a capital improvements if we want.
When you need to.
When we need to.
Whatever you want.
Yeah, don't spend it, yeah.
Whatever we want, all right.
So, so I didn't. So yes, we have been talking about 1 point, the 1.6 with the million to CIP, but 600,000 to transportation. But because I did say that I would return that, I'm doing what I said I would do. And so we are offering that back.
Thank you, and we appreciate, yeah.
So that is how that will be presented to the board. And I wanted to have that discussion now, just to kind of relive that conversation that we had so that everybody is aware.
Remember, you're right. I remember it, we talked about it several times.
Yeah, so, you know, we, we made note of that to make sure. Now, that puts us the $400,000 in, in transportation, plus the 91, I think, is still sitting in there. So that's about 500,000.
It's close to 500.
Yeah, so, so that still has money in there to purchase buses. And, and actually, by doing nine one-year, eight one-year, it may be good to do four or five one-year. And, and then.
I'll have them all come do it at the same time.
Right.
Right.
30 buses in one.
In three years.
How many active buses do we have?
So Erin's getting me that report. I asked him for that and I'll, I'll send that to you as soon as he gets that to me.
Curious.
Yeah, he's supposed to, he, he updates his list on a, on a daily basis or yearly basis. And so I asked him to get that to me, so I'm waiting on that report from him. And I'll check with him again tomorrow.
Seems like the list, the line of cars every morning coming out of the middle school back on the open street gets longer.
So, but.
Parents, that's parents, though.
Parents, well, and that's it.
And they're on the EDA Parkway, too.
That, so many, we call it the EDA Parkway, but so many of them are, um, are taking, I know in my neighborhood, I think there might be three or four children on that bus in the afternoons because there are so many parents who pick up their kids and take them to school now, which is not.
Well, we have actually seen a reduction at some of our schools in the parent pickup line.
Really? Okay.
And so, at some of our schools, it's, it's been a reduction.
Interesting.
The line out here at E. Wilson looks smaller to me in the afternoon, about two o'clock. I'll get around to going down there and walk back down the street. And the line of cars looks like it's shorter than it was a year ago.
Yeah.
Now, and at Ressies, the, the car line there is shorter, you know, last year, we had, we had issues with the car line wrapping around and going by that Coligan, or, um, place right there, whatever that street is that goes over. Yeah, going out towards.
Remount.
Remount, yeah.
Yeah, that, Ressies, yes.
But this year, it's not backed up. Now, we had it the other day when we had the lockdown, we had it backed up all the way.
Special situation.
Yeah, but.
Good grief, could you have any more fun the first week?
But we're not having, right now, we're not seeing those lines of cars like we did last year at some of our schools, so.
So, we haven't had any incidents today.
Don't be quiet.
I wouldn't say that.
Be.
Not a minute.
I swear to you, more than say that. Yeah, so.
Nothing like an explosion, yes, sir.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Sheriff's hasn't made a press release today.
Right, no.
Thank goodness.
So.
That's a good thing.
Jeez.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But anyway, I just wanted to, to relive that, to, to define.
Thank you.
What is that, why is that different?
Yeah, that's right.
How that is, so.
All right, so that comes to scheduling our next meeting. That's, that's all we had, unless y'all have anything else?
No. Do you want to schedule it in, in two or three more weeks? Is that?
Probably.
Yeah.
Well, I would say you, you really need to wait till after our board meeting, so, yeah, and.
Well, that's just next week.
Oh, that isn't it?
No, no, sorry, that's two weeks.
That's two weeks.
The fondest, yeah.
Because our board is going to take action on those two budget items, and then, you know, we just discussed them.
Yeah.
In the week of the, is that the week of the twelfth then, are you thinking? Or do you want to do Thursday the eighth after our meeting, or?
I will be here that day.
Oh, right.
I'm going to be at the.
We can do the, we can do the twelfth or the fifteenth.
Twelfth would be better.
For you?
Yeah.
Okay, Mondays are always better for me. Thursdays are terrible, but I'm sucking it up.
I can do the twelfth as long as it's later in the afternoon.
Me too, me too.
Like four.
Four, yeah.
Four o'clock.
Yeah.
That's nice.
Well, come down to our place next time?
We'll just back and forth, back and forth. Sounds good. I'm still waiting on my coffee.
Oh, we had coffee, but you brought your own.
Did you, I didn't, I never.
I did.
That'll make you coffee.
Absolutely.
I keep mine in the cup.
He'll even put all the creamers and everything in it for you.
I don't need any.
So thoughtful.
I make it easy, just, just straight.
All right.
So, four o'clock on September twelfth?
Yeah.
That's not a regular meeting, check it out.
Okay, so, so the next meeting, will we be able to do a little more discussion on the MOU?
Yeah, we can plan that. We, we can help with the agenda.
We can work on the agenda.
We'll work on it, yeah.
We can do that.
Yeah, because we're sure that, and you guys can look at the numbers, the way he was looking at it and have some more, uh, like concrete numbers.